Commissioners, this is Troy, your host. We are live and recording.
Good afternoon, everyone, to our Tuesday, September 27th, 2022 land use and public hearing. If you’ll all stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Attorney Pratt, do we have certification of the agenda for today?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Three items on your agenda today. The Sterling Ranch Preliminary Plan Number 7, project file SB 2021-057. This item was continued from your August 23rd, 2022 meeting. The land disposal for Mirabelle Village, filing number 1, Lot 15, project file MI 2019-017. This item had mailed notice accomplished to all neighboring landowners September 8th, 2022. And finally, the resolution adopting amendments to Douglas County zoning resolution, Section 15, Planned Development, Section 26, Variance Standards and Procedures, project file DR 2022-003. This item had published notice accomplished August 25th, 2022. All of these items have been properly noticed, and you have jurisdiction to hear them today.
Thank you, Attorney Pratt. Do any Commissioners have disclosures for items on this agenda?
I have none.
No, sir.
And I have none either. With that, we’ll move to Item 2, our land use meeting agenda items. There are no items for this Item 2, so we’ll move to Item 3, our public hearing agenda items. The first item is 3A, a Sterling Ranch Preliminary Plan Number 7, project file SB 2021-057. Brett Thomas presenting for staff.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Brett Thomas for Plan Services. Project Sterling Ranch Preliminary Plan Number 7, project file SB 2021-057. The applicant has requested a continuance of the hearing to October 11th, 2022, at 2:30 PM.
Okay. Any questions for Brett?
Brett, I do have a question. Didn’t we already continue this once from August?
Correct. It was originally scheduled for the Board on August 23rd and was continued to today, and they’re requesting to continue to October 11th.
Is there some kind of issue you are aware of?
They’ve been working to address some comments with their last submittal that was submitted the day before the staff report was due. So those have been worked out, but the staff report was not ready at that time.
Okay. Thank you.
Additional questions for staff?
No questions.
And I don’t have any questions either. With that, I will bring it back to the Board for any further discussion and/or motion.
If it pleases the Board, I do have a motion to continue the Sterling Ranch Preliminary Plan Number 7, project files SB 2021-057, to October 11th, 2022, at 2:30 PM in the afternoon.
Second.
There’s a first and second on the floor. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that carries 3-0. With that, we’ll move to Item 3B, which is a land disposal for Mirabelle Village, filing number 1, Lot 15, project file MI 2019-017. Mike Passika presenting for staff.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Mike Passika, representing Planning Services, and the project before you is Mirabelle Village, Block 6, Lot 15, land disposal request. The project number is MI 2019-017, and Douglas County is the owner of the property in question. The applicant’s request is for Douglas County to transfer ownership of Lot 15, Block 6, Mirabelle Village, filing 1, to Highland Meadows Properties. The land disposal process begins with the submittal of a request to dispose of county-owned property. Following a review period by county agencies, there is a public meeting before the Board of County Commissioners. There have been no comments received from the public. Take a look at a vicinity map. The property highlighted with the red star is situated in the south-central area of the county, northwest of the town of Larkspur. And this is the zoning map. The site is outlined in red, right in the center of the map. It’s its own suburban residential and is within the West Plum Creek subarea of the Douglas County 2040 Comprehensive Master Plan. And one more map. This is a little closer view of the property. Again, outlined in red. As you can see, the property is partially forested. It’s relatively flat and has no structures or utilities. Sanicio Circle, which borders the property on the north, is a platted county right-of-way but is not improved at this location. For some background, the Mirabelle Village filing 1 subdivision was approved by Douglas County in 1971, creating 502 residential lots. The county acquired the parcel in 1982 through a tax lien due to unpaid property taxes. The county paid $948.40 for the property. There are no existing structures, improvements, or utilities on the property in question. The request was referred to all relevant county divisions and departments for input and complies with the land disposal standards shown here on this slide. No comments were received from the county divisions or departments in their review of this request. Staff’s assessment includes the following suggested conditions of approval. Number 1, prior to conveyance, the applicant shall submit a property appraisal for review and acceptance by the county at a subsequent public hearing. Condition number 2, all commitments and promises made by the applicant or the applicant’s representative during the public meeting and/or agreed to in writing and included in the public record have been relied upon by the Board of County Commissioners in approving the application. Therefore, such approval is conditioned upon the applicant’s full satisfaction of all such commitments and promises. This concludes staff’s presentation. I can take questions at this time. Otherwise, Walt Kowalski is here this afternoon to ask any questions you might have.
Mike, thank you for that presentation. Any questions for Mike?
I have none.
Yeah, Mike, so purchase, you know, through the tax lien process by the county, it sounded like $900?
A little over that, correct.
Okay. Do we have a feel for any additional investment that the county has made into the property? I mean, it doesn’t look like we’ve done any improvements, but is there any other investment that the county has made into the property?
There has not been, no. No improvements, no extension of services, roads, utilities, none of that.
Okay. Okay. I think that’s my questions. I’m, of course, happy to hear any other questions by the Board, but would like to hear from the applicant.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Teal. I said a couple of questions, Mike. I mean, I understand the nature of the application. Obviously, for a request made by a private citizen, the county typically would require payment at a fair market value. Is that part of the consideration that you’ve discussed with the applicant?
It is, yes. It is. I don’t know, the little bit of background for Mirabelle Village is kind of unique, and this was outlined in the staff report, was the, at the time the subdivision was approved, the county didn’t have a mechanism just to capture security from a developer to, if, in fact, roads and utilities weren’t installed, county just didn’t have a process at that time. So the subdivisions kind of sat in this state since 1971 because there’s been no ability to extend services, water, utility, anything like that. And so we have these parcels out here that are, also due to their zoning, which is suburban residential, which requires central water and sewer, are, you know, kind of undevelopable in their current state.
Okay. Thank you. Further questions from the Board? Okay, Mr. Kowalski.
Yes?
Do you have a presentation or any, are you just available for questions today?
Well, I’m available for both.
So, sir, I’m going to just have you, if you could state your name and where you’re from for the record.
Walter Kowalski. I live at 2172 Sanicio Drive in Larkspur. We own much of part of Mirabelle. We moved there in 1992. Since that time, we’ve acquired most of the lots. Recently, we have downzoned, or attempting to downzone. We had all of the lots that we had, about 60 lots, and we went through and eliminated lot lines. So we have large plats of land. We look at the land as a privilege, a sanctuary. We have no need to develop it. We have no plans to develop it. We have children. We plan to, of course, when our passing happens, to donate that to our kids. It’s in the will. So all we are is really caretakers of the land, as I see it, more than anything. We have wildlife. We unfortunately have had people come down and camp on it, shoot on it, dump on it, take their bikes, their ATVs, UTVs, and thanks for the Commissioners. Thank you for what you have previously done in Mirabelle, helped us clean it up. And so it is in a red zone area, lot of fire danger. We’ve mitigated 40 acres at the cost of $48,000 of our property, and we continue to upgrade the property as we move along. So this lot is contiguous to other lots we own in that block, and our goal is to not have any development along with the other property owners. Leo Haywood, Gary Lorenz own major portions of the property. Occasionally, we have people come down and want to look at a lot. They can’t find it because there’s no pins anymore. There’s no roads to access it, and it’s in its natural state, which is, if you haven’t gone down here, it’s really beautiful. We really feel privileged to own the land. So we just want to acquire it, and, you know, it’s contiguous. It’s in each, we own the lots on either side of it, and we own lots in front of it, just as long as we, over time, can eliminate the lot lines and have the property in perpetuity for the county.
Great. Thank you for that, Mr. Kowalski. Any questions for the applicant?
So, Mr. Kowalski, I remember when you had me break a piece of wood in 2009.
Oh, my God, yeah.
Yes, I remember that. I worked with Mr. Lorenz maybe two or three years ago, and we did some legislation so we could put some gates on those roads down there to keep people out of there because they were going back there and starting fires. I spent, I bet I went on three or four tours with Mr. Lorenz of that property. So I appreciate you and the Haywoods. Do I have that name right?
Leo Haywood, yeah.
So you were going through there and systematically buying pieces to put them together, but what this will do is protect unsuspecting property, potential property owners, from thinking they’re being, they’re buying a piece of property for their dream home.
Correct.
That will never, ever be able to be developed. So you are providing a service to the county, I think, by collecting these parcels, eliminating the lot lines, like you talked. I think this development was done maybe in 1970, and so there were no protections in place. So there’s a lot of lots down there that people have been paying property taxes on for a long time, and then when they realize they can’t do anything with them, they’re upset, they’re out of a lot of money. So thank you for doing this and helping the county fix a wrong that happened many years ago.
Yeah. And the subsequent impact of that has been, to the chagrin of a lot of the old lot owners who bought the lots, that you can’t build, there’s no building on any of these lots. They’re a half acre. You can’t put water in, you can’t drop a well. It has to be all provided. It’s not in there. And we bought those from lot owners as a result of that. It’s been a monopoly game, if you will. Here’s a lot, someone wants to sell, and we buy that one. It’s contiguous to our land, by the way. We’re south of Sanicio. Leo Haywood’s north of it. He’s done the same thing. He’s actually going through the process now of eliminating lot lines, similar to what we did, and is working with Mike in terms of that, doing that. So it is, again, unfortunately, there are attempts by some people to say there’s a future residential building, or it’s going to be a future opportunity for you. If you look at our plat map, which I have brought copies of, if you want to look at it, there’s a lot that’s isolated. We own everything all around it. There is no way that that lot’s going to be developed by the county. It’s not going to allow that person to get a building permit. And unfortunately, there’s some individuals trying to say there’s a future building opportunity here, and, you know, there is. And I actually walk around with sheets of paper, and I put up signs, and I meet someone, and I say, “Just, please go to the county. Let them explain to you. Don’t take my word for it. Let Mike explain to you whether you can build on this lot. If you have $10,000, $15,000, where could you better invest that for your family? Because this is not going to appreciate.” In 50 years, it’s been there. There’s been no residential lots, half-acre lots, built on getting a building permit. So unfortunately, people are upset when they hear that, but I say, “Hey, there’s better opportunities in Douglas County for you, other than here.”
So the neighbors, maybe you’ve been one of them, have put up signs, because when I’ve been down there, I’ve seen these signs that basically say, “Don’t buy a property here. You’ll never be able to build on it. Contact the county.”
Yeah, I paid for those signs. It says, “Warning, contact the county. Ask them, you know, do your due diligence. Get an appraisal, buy an independent appraiser if you’re being told it’s worth so much money, and just do.” Now, that’s an informed buyer. If an informed buyer decides after they get all that information they want to buy it, so be it. However, many of them are non-informed. They’re being told it has future opportunity, investment opportunity. And I would say, get that in writing by the Realtor and hold that person accountable because you’re selling something that’s right now not available.
Thank you, Mr. Kowalski.
Thank you.
Further questions?
Yeah, Mr. Kowalski, so do you have plans with this piece of land to go ahead and integrate it legally with the land you own adjacent?
This particular one, yeah. Block 6, if you look at Block 6, we owns about half of it, lots that we own. So it would be another one to add to it, and eventually be able to eliminate lot lines on that particular. It’ll be, what, 10 acres when it’s all said and done, I think? Yeah, 10 acres.
Okay. Okay. Obviously, this is, despite all the comments that you shared with us about how it’s probably not developable land, and so probably not a really good deal for an individual buyer to come and take. It is real property owned by the county right now. I mean, we did hear Mike talk about how, present that you were amiable towards a fair market assessment. Can I just hear you declare that as well in terms?
I’m sorry, could you say it again? I have hearing, so.
Just wanted to make sure that you were indeed amiable for a fair market assessment and, you know, paying a fair market assessment for this land to the county?
Yeah, you know, and I don’t know what an appraisal will cost. I mean, I have an appraisal that was done several years ago when we bought a lot from an attorney who was the estate attorney, and he had an appraiser go at it, and I have a copy of it. The appraiser said it’s not really worth anything because you can’t build on it. So, you know, the appraisal, as opposed to the tax, you know, is assessed, I understand what it’s assessed at, but an appraiser came out and said, “For the estate of the individual.” And the attorney said, “What would you give me for it?” I said, “I’ll give you $2,500.” You know, he said, “Can you give me something for the estate?”
Okay. Mike, do we know how old that appraisal is that Mr. Kowalski just talked about?
The appraisal is 2012. I have a copy of it with me, and nothing’s changed on that appraisal, except now you can’t access it. The roads are all closed. Everything else is the same.
Okay. Okay. But thank you for that information. I appreciate that.
You’re welcome.
That could be determinative as we move forward. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
So, sir, just wanted to confirm that you were okay with the two conditions as presented by staff? And Mike, if you want to put those up?
Which one specifically, Abe?
Do you want to put those up, Mike?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay, great. And I, so I guess I’m struggling a little bit to understand why, maybe just a little bit more background as to why you are acquiring all of these parcels. What is your history and background been?
Could you repeat that, please?
Sure. I’m just asking about your personal history and background in acquiring these parcels, if you want to just kind of fill in the blanks for?
We live there.
Yeah.
Our house is right in Mirabelle. We have the Kowalski Trust, which is where our house sits on, about 30 acres, and then we have the Highland Meadows. And so we live there. We’re right there.
Right, and I get that. I think there are a lot of people in Douglas County that live in places, but they don’t buy up all the parcels that are right next to them. So I’m trying to get a sense of what your objective was with that.
To, at a future time, eliminate those lot lines, what we’ve done with the property we currently have.
I see. And to downzone so that you have your residence, your parcel, that you have a single-family structure on, and then have that land around it be downzoned. Well, that makes sense.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Well, further questions from the Board? Okay, with that, let me open it up for any citizen comment on this item. Is there any, sure, thank you. Is there any citizen comment, either in person or online?
Commissioner, I have no online comment.
Okay, with that, I’ll close citizen comment and bring it back to the Board for any further discussion and/or emotion.
I have a motion to approve the land disposal for Mirabelle Village, filing number 1, Lot 15, with two conditions as presented, project file MI 2019-017.
Second, we wish to speak in favor of the motion.
Please.
Well, you know, Mr. Kowalski is actually doing something that I’ve probably always only said in my own head many times when we have a development in front of us, and we have neighbors who object, and they’re worried and they’re concerned about it impinging their view shed, whatever the development would be, disturbing their lives. And I think, again, something I’ve said in my head and probably never said out loud was, “Well, then, why don’t you buy it?” And so, quite frankly, Mr. Kowalski, thank you for, you know, doing kind of this thing I’ve always said in my head, because that does sound like exactly what you’re doing, sir. You’re, you see this development. Now, we do know it’s defunct and probably not developable, but you’re taking the personal responsibility, you’re taking on the personal property rights yourself, and putting your money where your mouth is. So I tip my hat to you. In terms of the nature of the disposal, I’ll tell you, it sounds like Mr. Kowalski is prepared to actually remunerate the county based upon this. I would like to see that occur. I would like to see some exchange of funds occur. Obviously, it sounds like, based on the county’s financial obligations on this up until this time, those are pretty modest. In terms of a appraisal, I got to tell you, I do know we’ve seen some changes in the market because Mr. Kowalski would have to engage in the cost of an appraiser. I got to be honest, guys, this land is set, owned by the county, for a generation. I’d actually be supportive of using the 2012 appraisal in order to establish value. It does not sound like the appraised value is going to increase greatly just due to the nature of the developability, I don’t know if that’s good English, but I tried it, of the land. And so, again, I kind of, I’m very supportive of what Mr. Kowalski is doing. I think it’s responsible property ownership. So I’d prefer that, even though we seek remuneration for the county, I’d be willing to err on the side of making it less expensive for Mr. Kowalski to achieve this plan and achieve his dream as stated.
Thank you for that, Commissioner Teal. You know, I’ll just add, I am also in support of this application. I think I have said that out loud. When citizens come in or are concerned about view sheds, that probably makes sense to just buy the surrounding land and preserve that, if that’s what you intend to do. I know that through our open space measure, that’s absolutely what we do. We purchase and acquire open space to preserve view sheds and create buffers between communities. So I think we appreciate that conceptually. That said, I know we do have limitations as government from conveying a special benefit on a private citizen. And so for me, as much as I think that Commissioner Teal’s argument was persuasive, I think it would be appropriate for that fairness to occur, and so that whatever fair market value is for that property, that the county would be remunerated at that amount. How valuation is arrived upon, I’m comfortable with staff leading that effort and determining either through a BPO or a more simplified means how to determine valuation, but if that can be achieved simply and efficiently, I would be supportive of fair market value being paid for that parcel. Additional commissioner comment?
I have none.
So, let me just ask Attorney Pratt, so for the purposes of this particular motion, do we need to make a determination with regard to valuation before we vote?
That is not how it’s teed up right now. It’s teed up so that that will come at another time.
Oh, I see.
So it’s, you have the authority to do that if you wanted to right now, but as the motion stands, the motion is for a future hearing to set that amount.
Well, it doesn’t sound, then, that this, the valuation piece is germane to the motion or today’s hearing, so if there’s no further discussion, I’ll call for a vote. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that passes 3-0. Congratulations, Mr. Kowalski. Yeah, thank you for being here.
Thank you. It’s good to see you, and you understand why I wouldn’t talk to you before the hearing. Thank you, sir.
So with that, we’ll move to our final item in our public hearing agenda items, which is Item 3C, a resolution adopting amendments to Douglas County zoning resolution, Section 15, Planned Development, and Section 26, Variance Standards and Procedures, project file DR 2022-003. CJ Gates presenting for staff. Hi, CJ.
Hi, Commissioners. CJ Gates, representing Community Development. The request before you today is an amendment to the Douglas County zoning resolution, project The request is for approval of the amendment to the Douglas County zoning resolution, Section 15, Planned Development District, and Section 26, Variance Standards and Procedures. Per the zoning resolution, Section 109, the Board shall evaluate the proposed amendment, referral comments, staff report, and planning commission recommendation, and public testimony, and shall approve, approve with modifications, table for further study, remand to the planning commission, or deny the amendment proposal. The Board of County Commissioners reviewed opportunities to update the Douglas County zoning resolution at a February work session on June 20th. Staff initiated the amendment and received direction to proceed from the Board. The amendment is prepared by staff and forwarded to referral agencies for comment. Referral requests are also sent using the county’s contact list. The referral period was from June 27th to July 29th. During this time, a public workshop was offered on July 28th, 2022. At a board work session following the referral period, referral comments were presented to the Board, and the Board approved moving forward with public hearings. Following published public notice, the request was considered at a planning commission hearing. The planning commission hearing for this item was held on September 19th, 2022. No public comments were received. The planning commission presented one question to staff regarding one of the technical changes to the resolution. The planning commission recommended approval of the proposed amendments with a vote of 6 to 0. Within Section 15, Planned Development, the proposed regulations would reduce the threshold of an administrative PD amendment from 40% to 20% for the minimum setback, lot size, and building height. Lastly, the proposed amendments would also eliminate the ability to administratively relocate planning areas. Within Section 26, Administrative Variances, the proposed amendments would reduce the threshold of an administrative variance from 40% to 20% for a minimum lot area, maximum height of structures and fences, minimum setbacks, and minimum off-street parking requirements. The amendments would also reduce the maximum de-vegetated areas threshold from 35% to 20%. The proposed amendments also include some technical changes, including removing the Parker IGA and Casaroc overlay district from Section 15, changing workdays to calendar days to be consistent with the rest of the zoning resolution, exchanging sketch plan with preliminary plan to be consistent with the rest of the resolution, and lastly, general grammar corrections. Staff sent the proposed amendments to the countywide contact and referral agency list, which consists of approximately 500 respondents. A summary of the referral response was provided within your staff report. Staff also conducted a public workshop located in the board hearing room, where no citizens attended. After evaluating the proposed revisions, referral comments, and staff report, the Board may approve, approve with modifications, remand to the planning commission, or deny. Thank you, Commissioners. This concludes my presentation, and we are here for questions if you may have any.
Okay, thank you, CJ. Any questions for staff?
So CJ, is there a problem that we’re trying to fix with this change? So CJ, is there a problem that we're trying to fix with this change?
Commissioners, there's not a problem that we're trying to address. This was a directive from the board to make these changes.
Thank you.
Additional questions from the board?
No questions.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for your work on this, gentlemen. We greatly appreciate it. Let me open it up for any citizen comment. Is there any citizen comment either in the room or online?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no online comment.
Thank you, Troy. With that, I'll close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or motion.
So I'll just make a comment that I will be a no on this. We are creating more bureaucracy for citizens who want to come to the board or, or come to the county for small changes in plans that have already been made. And what we're going to do is increase the cost to them by having them come to the board instead of allowing Terrence Quinn, who's the head of the planning department, to make these approvals for these citizens.
Further discussion?
You know, I do think that Commissioner Thomas does make a good point in that, I mean, the whole point of setting standards to where administrative changes can be made versus bringing it back to really the ultimate responsibility of the board of county commissioners is to streamline operations. I, I think the only issue is, is that we always have to find that balance between what we do administratively and so, you know, with perhaps a, a lesser degree of scrutiny by the public, certainly with more speed, but then, of course, really kind of putting it behind that Chinese veil of responsibility and accountability to the public. I mean, I dig you guys a whole lot, you guys know that, but the bottom line is, you know, you guys can be good, you know, hostages for us when making these decisions and, and be that human shield of responsibility, that I, I think it's the, the feelings of the board, or at least the balance of the board, that that's a responsibility that we, we embrace. It's a responsibility that we understand that we have, we understand we're responsible to the people of Douglas County, and, and we don't shirk that responsibility. So then the trick is, how do you find that balance? And after looking at what other organizations are doing, what other counties are doing, what some of the foreign municipalities are doing, I don't know. I personally feel like this strikes a good balance, but I do go back to Commissioner Thomas's statements, and I do think there is a risk factor there that we really do need to keep an eye on. And so obviously, you know, we did demand staff work and work by our management team to bring this before the board for a decision, but we probably do actually need to keep an eye out as we're going through the, the coming months and years, and, and make sure that we are striking that appropriate balance between convenience for our development partners, convenience for our citizens, and, you know, our responsibilities to the people of Douglas County, Colorado. So with that said, if it does please the board, I do have a motion to approve a resolution adopting amendments to Douglas County zoning resolution, section 15, planning development, and section 26, variance, standards, and procedures, project file DR 2022-003.
Second.
So we have a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? You know, I, I'll just add that in examining our procedures and recognizing that up to this point, a 40% change could be made by an unelected official in our county, I, I think that would strike any average citizen as incredibly significant. As much as we greatly appreciate the work of planning, the Director of Community Development, who always does a phenomenal job, that's a lot to ask. No doubt, we want to streamline our procedures, ensure that they're efficient, but the three of us are elected by the populace of this county, which is currently 374,000 people, I believe is the current count, that accountability stops with us. And so for a citizen to encounter a 40% change where there's no public hearing, there's no public airing, it's just something done in an office, doesn't strike me as accountable. I think it will increase the level of, of expectation on the three of us to review these, these changes. But again, staff did a wonderful job at looking at the jurisdictional comparisons of what other areas are doing, and 20% is right in line with what we're seeing almost across the board on average. So I certainly support that. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Opposed, I'll vote no.
And that carries two to one. With that, our next land use meeting and public hearing will be held on Tuesday, October 11th, 2022, at 2:30 PM. We are adjourned.